Pledge of allegiance, please. Just to... Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal. A man on the street in New York City last week. Asked how many people could say the pledge of allegiance and some believe how many people don't know the pledge of allegiance. So I'm thinking of coming to work. Okay. So apparently we're pulling item two ahead, correct me?
Number one is the previous financial before number two and then number three.
Yeah.
All in order.
They're in proper order right now. All right, go ahead.
I'm reporting a financials for May 13, 2015. Resolution fifteen dash zero six seven is approved by the county administrator pursuant to the motion approved December 30, 2014. To authorize the county administrator to execute in lack of a quorum of commissioners and/or if session is canceled on a regular financial day or on a day when financials need to be approved, required approvals for county financials in 2014 as authorized by ORC three oh five three oh. This was a transfer, appropriation transfer of money out of our contingency, an amount of $50,000 and into our legal fees.
No action. No action. Take any action.
Yep.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board amend the motion from May 12, 2015 to read, approve and execute the engagement letter to provide outside legal services to the Jog County Board of Commissioners with Walter I. Haberfield. I have revealed the terms at law for the review of the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 without prior approval from the board.
Make that motion. Second. Yes. Mr. Spudlere. Walter I. Haberfield, isn't Walter and Haberfield, isn't it two different names?
Maybe it is. So Walter, there's a line in between these.
Well...
It's my friend.
Motion is amended to say Walter slash Haberfield.
Walter slash Haberfield.
It's a typo.
That's good.
It's the past, right?
Correct.
All right.
The financials today include supplemental appropriations for the senior center construction fund for reception area and kitchen improvement projects, cash transfers out of the general fund for first quarter 2015, interest transfers, the contract for Walter Haberfield LLP for outside legal services for the commissioners in the amount of $25,000, travel costs for the public defender's office, and the payment to GPP associates for engineering services for the Russell wastewater treatment plant upgrade project for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $21,816.65.
I'll make them motion. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Yes. Mr. Spudlere?
Hi.
Mr. Spudlere? Jessica, let's go in.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jessica. Nice logo.
Thank you. So I came out last week regarding our assistance with daily living program that we needed to go to bid for. Unfortunately, we missed our published date. We have planned to publish on the 14th, but we got notification too late to the May 4th, so we just needed to push everything. Yeah.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board rescind the motion from May 12, 2015. There ran permission to advertise for bids for home care services assistance with daily living program for Jogga County residents age 16 over to be held on Wednesday, June 3, 2015 at 2:00 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on May 14, 2015, May 21, 2015 on the county website. The Department on Aging is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for home care services assistance with daily living program for Jogga County residents age 16 over to be held on Wednesday, June 10, 2015 at 2:30 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on May 21, 2015, May 28, 2015 on the county website.
I'll make those motion. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Thanks, Jessica.
Nice day.
Morning.
Morning, Patty.
How's everybody?
Good. You?
Same type of thing here. We're going to bid for advertising, advertising for bids for our FAA grant program for pavement at the airport. What we are doing is we are advertising for concrete work, an alternate for asphalt. And then FAA does not pay, is not eligible to have 27 feet in front of each hanger paved. So we are also going to make that as an alternate, both concrete and asphalt, because we have applied to ODOT to pick up that portion. So we are going to bid, and I see here our bid dates are actually going to be May 21st, May 28th, and June 4th, and the bid opening will be June 8th. Hopefully they'll...
See, you have three dates that we have.
I have May 21 on here.
Correct. Yes, on the M2, then on May 28th and June 4th. And then on the county website as well.
And that's what we're approving today?
Correct.
Those are three dates?
Yes.
Patty, will that be in front of the temperature, like the small hangars too then?
No, well, partially. It is not, the small hangars or the T-hangers, as we call them, are not eligible to be paved around by FAA.
Okay.
So ODOT is the one that we will be looking for to see if they will assist us with paving around those. But we are only looking at the west side of those going forward, out to where the cement meets towards Metabaxing.
Okay.
We already have concrete in a pretty fair area, but around our fuel farm is still asphalt and it is caving. I mean, you can even, when somebody drives on it even with an airplane, you can feel it go up and down. So we have to put a little bit better sub-basin in with the concrete there. It was actually ODOT suggestion, we were just going to go asphalt, but it was ODOT suggestion because of our limited funding in upper half of the asphalt, that we go ahead and bid just the concrete so that if we can afford the concrete, which our engineer seems to think we'll be able to do, then it will be less upkeep for us in the future and less money out of pocket later.
Are those areas plowed all through the winter?
Yes.
So they're subject to frost heaving, whether or not somebody's using the airfield or not.
Yeah, it's used every day. It's not, it's not an option any longer not to plow.
They require that that surface be cleared.
It's used, yeah, especially there by the fuel tank, there is some of that.
Well, that I can understand. I meant over but in front of these hangers where someone made a plane sitting in there all winter long and never take it out.
Those hangers don't have planes that don't move in the winter.
They're all are flying out of there.
Yep.
In cold weather.
Yep. We are now active, very active out there. As a matter of fact, if you'd like to come out any Saturday, you know, again, the people that hangar there, there's a few that use their planes for something other than recreation. Mr. Coche from Airwolf Aerospace has his twin there, and they do take that out regularly. Mr. Hodgins, Milco Farm Garden, has a plane there again, who uses it regularly for business. There is a group, they call themselves GAG, Jogga Aero Group, and they have a plane there now that is used regularly. They all come out of, those three all come out of hanger two, and then we have recreational pilots in hanger three that fly in any weather, any excuse, and they're up in the air. So those, that area now is, has to be plowed, and plus of course we have Metabax in hanger one. So everything from hanger one, two, three, all the way up to the T-hangers has to be plowed all the time.
Best time of the year to fly, in the winter time?
You know what, cold air is better for the engines, yes, than warm air.
There's a real reason I ask the question, is because when we had near disaster last winter in the T-hangers, I'm thinking, well, that didn't happen overnight. If there are people who are using those hangers, they should have noticed that the doors became harder and harder to work and as the roof came closer and closer to the ground, you know, so...
Yeah, you know, the snow load that we got last year, I believe now that this has been happening for years.
Probably.
We have been fighting what we always considered heaving of the pavement where it was coming up to meet the doors.
So you, yeah, you thought the ground was coming up when in reality the building was going down.
Correct. Well, both were happening. We weren't wrong in that, but both were happening. And it was, it was very apparent this year when we got the snow and then the ice and then the snow and then the ice, and it just stayed up there. Our, we do have a pitch on our roofs, and usually the snow will come down or will melt because we are metal roofs in the middle of nowhere, and when we get the sun, usually it will take care of it. We noticed it last year at the end of the season, and we really believed it was pavement heaving. So we had some work done on hangers where we took about an inch and a half off the doors, especially in the center of the building where the, where it was most prevalent. And as it turned out, I think now, looking back on it, it was probably a combination of both. This year it just was so severe that, yeah, I would say we averted a disaster, and it was found by a pilot that was getting ready to leave.
He was trying to go out, right?
He was getting ready to leave and, you know, he's looking at it, he goes, well, this, this isn't normal, you know, he, we just took some off the bottom of these doors, and I can't even open my door again. And so then he started looking and the siding was starting to pop away, the faceplates were starting to pop from the trusses inside, the conduit had popped off of where it was across the trusses. So we knew there was something more going on than just pavement heaving. And so we've got a couple of engineers out there taking a look, and I would expect here at our next meeting there'll be some final decisions on what we have to do. It's a difficult spot for the board because here you have buildings that are old, that were constructed pre-Jogga County snow load. If we start making a lot of changes, especially to the trusses themselves, we lose what would be somewhat of a grandfather, and we have to start bringing those buildings specifically up to full code, which would mean footers that they don't have and a lot of expense. So they're trying to come up with ways to do it that will not require us to do all of that, because in reality, these buildings are too close to the runway now by current FAA standards. Again, they were built pre those FAA standards, and at some point, those buildings have to come down. However, the income that those buildings produce covers our operating expenses, and without them, we're going to be in here asking for no more time.
How much of the building is within that zone?
Almost all of it.
Really? Is that, do you want that much space?
Yeah, almost all of it. Where the other hangers are, and if you look at an overview of the airport, you see there's three hangers that run in a row, hangers one, two, three, and then the T-hangers come out like this.
No, I know what you're talking about.
They're all supposed to be equal, which is, which is maybe one, one and a half bays out, you know, out of the five that go out there.
It works fine when we don't have a snow load.
Wonderfully. I mean, there's no stress.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, after the snow, after we got the snow off, got the ice off, with the exception of a couple slits that ended up in the roofs from removing that snow, they bounced back fairly well. You can see some stress points still, and we know that we have to take care of them. The insurance, none of the insurance covered because this is a maintenance issue, not an incident. Would the buildings have fallen down, insurance probably would have covered everything, but it doesn't, so it all falls on us as a maintenance project. And our initial quote was about $33,000 a building. And that's a tough spot when you know these buildings at some point have to come down, but until we build some other type of hangers to offset that income that we lose, there is no option for us to be without that income without it being burdening taxpayers. And that is something we fought very, very hard to do. We've become very self-supportive with the exception of the grants, and we just don't want to go backwards here. So we know we have to put money into them, we do have a budget that should allow for it, we're trying to get that budget to be closer to about $25,000 a building, and then I think...
This is just a question that probably I should ask you at a different time, but did you ever think about just coming up with some solution to, when needed, heat the underside of that roof so the metal gets hot and the snow slides off?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that's part of what we did to help get the ice off.
Right.
The problem there is there, the buildings are 51 by 210 foot and all wooden. So what we had to do even to get that to work was to corridor off a portion of it.
Right, do a portion at a time. You can't do that whole building at one time.
And it took, it, it just was not effective, even with the big bullet heaters we got and everything we tried, even trying to lift them up, it was very ineffective.
You kind of let it get out of hand before you started, if you kept on that progressively, you know, periodically as a snow buildup, rather than trying to get it all off at one time like you were forced to do, it might not be as big a deal.
Right. We were concerned at the end that, you know, even open those doors, those doors have a 42-foot opening, and even opening those doors to try to get the planes out could have, at the time, collapsed those buildings. So, you know, we were kind of in a catch 22, okay, what's our best option? The only option we really had was to remove the snow load, and now we need to shear those buildings up so that they will maintain. And I think part of the reason that, that they had such a heavy load this year was the winds coming from the west seemed to pick up a bunch of snow off of the roofs and drop it on the other side, and that's the side that was so much more effective.
The doors.
The center of the buildings where there is the most stress, they have to span for like a great distance there, and in that center of that 210-foot building is where it was most, and then also, you know, with the extra snow that was continually coming over from the other side. And I think what really hurt was that we had rain in between, so the rain went through the snow, usually the snow will fall off the roofs, the rain went through the snow and formed ice underneath the snow and no longer allowed it to come off.
Yeah, the ice is what stuck to the steel, not the snow.
Correct, correct, correct. So we're working on that solution, and I'm hopeful that our next board meeting will have the answers that we need to get started for the summer to get that all sheared up. Our, what we really need to do is to get started on some plans to build some alternate hangers so that in the 15 to 20 years that it will take up to pay off those hangers, they will be ready and the L.O.F. hangers will be ready. That's got to be the next game. It, it's a little tough because, you know, the, the hangers are expensive. We went to bid with them once, and it was almost double of what we estimated it would be to build one's hangers. So I'm not sure exactly how we're going to look at that.
Thank you very much.
The Jogga County Airport Authority is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the FAA AIC project 33900541815, reconstruct asphalt apron, with the bids being opened on June 8, 2015 at 11:00 AM by the Airport Authority. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on May 21, 2015, May 28, 2015, June 4, 2015 on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Spudlere?
Thank you. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Good morning. He dressed for vacation. Yeah, we know he's the engineer. You.
You don't want to get run over by anybody in here, that's all.
Morning.
We've got a couple of easements on your agenda today, just asking you to sign some proofies. Andy, we had most of the conversations with these people, they're related to our, first ones are a heat road bridge project, that we opened for that last week and pretty favorable. Engineer's estimate on that was $300,000, the attempt goal was $283, so that was $17,000 under. And we'll be coming to the commissioners here soon asking you to award the contract. Then the other project that, the other easement is not for the project, but a precursor to the Thling River paving project, we need to do a little bit of culvert work before the project comes along. We just opened that bid here recently, too. Pretty good savings, estimate was 625, came in at 548, so $77,000 when that comes out too, so we did pretty well. But this is just to take care of the, out of the right way in a couple areas where there's culverts and work with people, and they're very agreeable and happy to work with us, so if you have particular questions on the size and locations and stuff, then you can ask those sketches, but people are very agreeable, good to work with, very good people.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute an easement for highway purposes between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners and Lasbo I and Susan C. Z. La, parcel 11 dash 020860 for the heat road bridge project in Chester Township in the amount of $1,037. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute an easement for highway purposes between the Jogga County Board of Commissioners and Virginia County Trustee, parcel 06 dash 012300 and 06 dash 024100 for the Thling Road project in Sheridan Township in the amount of $250.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye. Thank you. Nice day.
Sunshine, we've got stuff to do.
Hey, Joe. By the way, thank you for helping Chester.
Yeah.
Nobody in here really is aware of the fact that you went into our township and was helping one of the trustees out there.
Yeah.
But it made a big difference, and I appreciate it.
Great, great, yeah, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
All right, well, we're here on behalf of JFS to, you know, ask the board to approve and execute our subgrant agreement, which comes up every two years. This time it's for the period of July 1, 2015, through June 30, 2017, and is, is to approve the, all the federal funds that the agency uses to run all our different federal oriented programs, allow for these funds to come into, you know, Jogga County, JFS, so we can administer those programs. It's a contract that otherwise we will not, you know, this is sort of our big federal contract that we have that, you know, they hold over us, and if we don't agree to these things, then, then you're not going to get the money, so...
Really, is that all we have to do?
Yeah. Thank you. So, but these monies, again, as we've, you know, always said, are, are documented and audited and done, administered appropriately and through regulations and, you know, done to help our, our people, so we just ask that you execute this and...
This is...
The Department of Jogga Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the Ohio Department of Jogga Family Services subgrant agreement G1617115515 upon the recommendation of the executive director establishing the terms, conditions, and requirements governing the administration and use of federal funds by the Jogga County Jogga Family Services for the period July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2017.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
First of all, I want to thank Christie for giving us on so fast. This came to me Monday morning, got this resignation letter, told me out, out there, really surprised us. As a director, I'm upset about it, but as a human being, I'm really glad for it, so he's moved out to the county water department with about a $3 to $4 increase. So it's going to be a big, big challenge for him for the next year, he's going to be doing water and everything, so he's going to take all those tests and, so, he's very, very capable, and I think he'll do it, and he'll do really good with it, so. I know Richard Newsom and myself have been really glad, even with the last two years with, with him and improving him and bringing him up, so, being a part of his life and everything, so...
He's been with us how long?
About two years. Yep. He came with us on May 28, 2013, so, once again, he's been a great kid, so, in a way, I hope you disagree with it, but in a way, I wish for the best.
I think we can keep him here. We can disagree, but we should try and turn those things down.
It's just not working, so, we had about an hour conversation, yes, last night, so, once again, he's there for after-hours, anytime, and he's always willing to learn and to hold it, so I think it would be a tremendous loss for us and a tremendous gain for making water work.
The maintenance department is requesting the board accept the resignation of Clifford James Davis, full-time maintenance worker to be effective June 26, 2015.
Show move. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Aye.
Number 11 is just starting to advertise for his replacement, his last day will be June 26, trying to get that aboard.
The maintenance department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of full-time maintenance worker number 1904. This position will remain posted until till...
Remove. Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm handling the transit one, my fellow family, where she come up. He's found two good guys to come on as full-time or part-time drivers. One is available to start June 1, and then Mike Person and Mr. Christopher Black will be available based on his, his notice to his current employer effective July 1, so Mike would like to consider hiring those two folks at what time?
Is this the second one, Christopher Black, is he the former teacher at Sheridan?
I don't know. Mike didn't give me the background information.
Yeah, okay. Did he say what his current employer was?
Didn't have.
If it's the same guy, he's a driver for one of the big tour bus companies. After he retired, he was a school teacher. If this is the same Chris Black, his, what are you going to do in retirement? I'm going to drive for, I don't know, one of these great big tour bus companies, and he used to park it down at the bowling alley here on the weekends because he lives down in that area of Sheridan. I'm hoping that's the guy, because he's a good employee.
The transit department is requesting the board approve hiring Mike Person to the position of part-time driver number 2210-1 to be effective June 1, 2015 at a rate of $12.64 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $13.30 per hour. The transit department is requesting the board approve hiring Christopher Black to the position of part-time driver number 2210-1 to be effective July 1, 2015 at a rate of $12.64 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $13.30 per hour.
Make those motion. Second. Aye.
Commissioner Spudlere?
Aye.
Catherine? Your timing was very good.
Jeez. Good morning.
Morning. Confessions before you begin though, with the wellness form that you put on.
Oh, you mean the X-bone?
Yeah, you did a really good job.
Well, thank you very much.
Notice we had a lot of people go down there, a lot of employees go down there, and like, as much as I'm not a big fan of wellness, I think you did a really nice job, and I get extra benefit from it, so...
Well, thank you. And to the committee, and to all of the directors and managers too who let their employees attend, we really appreciate it all.
I was most impacted by the big blob of fat laying on the table.
Yeah, I know, that's pretty disgusting.
They had the five pounds of fat laying there, and so you walk up and you see what five pounds of fat looks like.
Yeah.
And you say, whoa, it's time for me to go on a diet.
Yeah, it's kind of disgusting. I know Oprah Winfrey years ago... I know Oprah Winfrey years ago, she lost a lot of weight, and she came pulling in a red wig and with as much weight as she lost, it was really, I mean, like, she was struggling to pull herself, yeah. The visuals are always good. All right, so this morning, I'm asking that you look at these contracts for comp management. The unemployment contract is through Sedgwick, but that's, you know, comp management, Sedgwick, that's all one and the same, basically. They have not raised the cost for either of these. The one contract for the workers' comp is ten thousand three fifty, and that's for our TPA. And as you are aware, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation requires all large employers to have an MCO, and that cost for that MCO is kind of in the cost of your workers' comp, but we also have our third-party administrator, and they act as, only in our best interest. So, they are only looking at how to save the county money and how to get employees back to work, and we've had a really great relationship with comp management, and I was trying to look back on the records, it has to be going in twenty years that we've brought this organization, and we built a relationship of trust and great communication, and I think we've done really well. When I first came to Jogga County, our premiums for workers' compensation were about a million dollars a year, and I just received our estimate for two thousand sixteen, and it's at three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand with an eighty-four, with an estimated target refund of eighty-four thousand, so I think we're doing pretty well. And I have to say, comp management has been really instrumental in handling and managing our claims and looking for those handicaps and all those things that save us money, all the settlements and things, and also being in group retro, which we'll talk about at a later time, but they're a great organization to deal with.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Workers' Compensation Service Agency Agreement during the Comp Management LLC Ecentric CMS company for the period of May first, two thousand fifteen, through April thirty, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Unemployment Compensation Service Agency Agreement with Sedgwick Management Services Incorporated for the period of May first, two thousand fifteen, through April thirty, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of one thousand two hundred and five dollars.
I'll make those motions, second.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Secretary?
Aye.
Mr. Claywell?
Aye. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board concur with Newbury Township trustees in not requesting a hearing on a liquor license request if I witness banquet LLC Clubhouse Patio Storage Building Golf Course located at one forty-eight-five Levena Road, Newbury, CTRFO nine-six-zero-nine-nine-nine-zero.
So move.
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Secretary?
Aye.
Mr. Claywell?
Aye. There's only one link on this one.
President, I'm local.
I'll put it right here. You did, you confused me. Do you want to discuss the other? Dave, do you want to?
Number seventeen is for the board to consider approving a letter that's being sent to the County Police Court and the Law Library Resources Board. The Law Library Resources Board occupies currently a considerable portion of the lowest, lower floor basement of the courthouse. The County Police Court has requested that the commissioners take action to reconfigure those offices and make them, make them up for the use of the probation department that's currently on the second floor of the Opera House. There's been some back and forth. The Law Library had expended quite a bit of money just, I think, about five years ago on that space, and it appears that what the court is looking for would require the Law Library to vacate the space they renovated not that long ago. Basically, this letter just really expresses the both sides, you know, this office's respect for what they do, for what's involved, and the fact that they both had valid issues that need to be addressed, and the letter's asking that the court and Law Library Resources Board can come together and try to come up with a solution that meets the needs of both sides and suggests that perhaps they might engage, that we might engage the services of a mediation service that's offered through the Supreme Court to help them sort that out, just as, as the courts very often try to avoid litigation by suggesting mediation. That's what's also contained in this letter as well, so it's just really encouraging these two parties to work together to solve this issue.
Any questions, discussion?
The commissioner's office is requesting the board execute a letter to the Jog County Board of County Police Judges Forrest W. Burton, David L. Fury, and Mr. Jeffrey Lindor, Square Chairman of the Jog County Law Library and Resources Board.
So move.
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Secretary?
Hope's team?
Mr. Claywell?
Aye. Okay, and the next one is...
This is the waiver?
This is the waiver. This is a, this is a document. Apparently, the Dogwood's office was specified as a possible recipient of proceeds from the will, and as part of the estate processing, process of closing out the estate, because the Dogwood was named, it's been asked the President of the Board of Commissioners, execute this waiver of notice on Harry's account. It's a procedural thing. At this point, we're not even sure that we proceed to the Dogwood to actually receive any money, but because we're listed as well, it's been requested that the board and the President sign and execute this document.
Okay.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the waiver of notice on Harry's account.
So move.
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Claywell?
Aye.
Mr. Claywell?
Okay. Any questions, or we're signing? No?
This is Stephen Stoller and Manny Cannell, and they're seniors at Berkshire High School and shadowing the prosecutor's office last week and this week, and I just thought it was important for them to come and see how county government was running, so.
Cool. So, somebody needs to shadow the prosecutor. We have to do that on a regular basis. Can you sign kids on a regular basis to kind of keep track of places?
Maybe, we could, yeah.
And then you come over here, report back to us, and tell us what's up? That'd be a good thing. So, I have a question for you, as we're getting these documents out. What is a county commissioner? Approved?
Approved stuff.
Close it up.
And I have with me Julia Karlovic, John Karlovic's niece. She's doing her senior project by shadowing people in the Maple Leaf, Aaron Chesterland news, over the next week or so.
Outstanding. Good. So, is she going to be helping with the editing process and all that stuff?
Sure, yeah.
All right.
Somebody's got to do it.
You can come again when you're not shadowing. Like, if you can't sleep, you're bored or something, you can come over.
You can watch the videos on YouTube in case you're...
Yeah, late at night when you can't doze off.
Put those on, you'll be right up.
Hi. How am I?
Are we going to see this on the front page of the Maple Leaf?
No.
I just don't want to see it on a wanted poster. I want to see it on a wall of the post office.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of all public employees, and I'm going to add to that at the Department of Jog Family Services.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Secretary?
Aye.
We're going to have joining the board Craig Swinson, Paul Lyman, Gina Schultz, Donna Barrow, and Lou Brandy and myself.
Will there be action?
Probably will be action.
Upon returning.
Yes.
of Andrea Winfield as a probationary removal. Termination is effective immediately due to unsatisfactory performance during probationary period. With this action, the Department of Jog Family Services has complied with the Separation Policy Section of the Jog Family Services Personal Policy Procedure.
Anybody's got a motion?
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Secretary?
Aye.
Mr. Claywell?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
You don't want to go through this, so I move on here. You want to have some of this, I'll hold off.
We all got it.
We don't need to go through all of them. No, they all got it on their agenda, so I moved to a adjournment. Thank you.